Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Silvertown Hall and to this special call meeting of the North Carolina Highway Project. I'm going to go ahead and start even though there are people coming in so that we can keep them on schedule. We have to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor, stick your hand up. Okay? And I will give everybody some little ground rules of how we handle our meetings and also give you the order that will happen during this special call meeting. The first thing that we will do is we will have informational presentations. And I'm just going to read the names of the people who will be doing that and they can raise their hands so that you know who they are. Everybody will go to the podium. And the first is Sarah Thompson. She's Southwest Commission Executive Director. Rose Bogus is the Southwestern Commission Transportation Planner. Brian Birch is North Carolina Division 14 Engineer. Jake Howard with the Smart Roads Alliance. And Chris Joyell, Asheville Design Center. Those are the people that will be giving us some information about this project. And after that, we will have public comment. And the public comment is held to three minutes for each person who has signed up to speak. We will go with the people that have the most stake in this, the property and business owners, somebody that owns both a business and owns the property. They will be the ones that speak first. And then after that, the property owners. And after that, business owners that are affected by this. And after that, any other comment by the public. If there are not any questions, I will allow Sarah to...
Sorry. And Sarah might can just pull the mic.
I'm going to get you to sign. Yes. I just want to hold it. You want to take it over?
I'll stand up in the corner. I can't see where I am. Stay behind me. Okay.
Good evening. Good afternoon. Oh, it's not on. My name is Sarah Thompson. I'm the Executive Director of the Southwestern Commission and a resident and taxpayer of the town of Silva. Used to be on the town board. I say all of that to let you know that I live here, very invested in this town, I love this town. I'm here tonight to speak from my professional perspective on how my organization's been involved in this project over the years. The Southwestern Commission is what's called the Council of Government for the seven western counties in North Carolina. So there are councils of government all across North Carolina and all across the country. There are regional organizations that work with the local governments. So our regional organization, the Southwestern Commission, is based here in Silva, but we serve Haywood, Jackson, Macon, Swain, Cherokee, Graham, and Clay Counties. We work for county commissioners and town board members on projects such as economic development, community planning, services for the aging population, workforce development, and transportation planning. So transportation planning aspect of my job is what I'm here to talk to you tonight about. And Rose Bogus, who will speak after me, is the Transportation Planner for the Commission. So I'm going to give you a bit of history about how we got to this point with this project and a little bit of my involvement in it. So this road, I think it's important to know, the road that was built between, the existing 107 was built to be a connector between the town of Silva and Klowee. For those of you that remember back when it was built, there weren't a lot of businesses along that road. It was built to be a bit of a higher speed road that would get you quickly from Silva to the Klowee area. Over the years, businesses developed along that road because it was sort of the main corridor through town, so it became a very popular place to have a business. As all that development was happening, driveways were just being cut in. You know, each new business that would come would get their own driveway. There wasn't a plan in the town or the county that really dictated how you could put your driveway there. You just put a driveway. So over the years, now we have all of these driveways and a very, very busy business corridor on a road that was not designed to be that. During the 90s, NC DOT reconfigured NC 107 from four lanes to five lanes. So as some of you may remember, when it was two lanes going in each direction, well, if you had to turn left to get to a business on the left side, you would stop in that left-hand lane. So that was causing a lot of backup. So in the 90s is when they put in that middle turn lane, which is where a lot of the causes of conflict are now. And that's when traffic was increasing and we started having a lot more accidents during that time, too. Also in the 90s is when officials began looking at options for building a bypass around Silva. So you may remember the Southern Loop from a proposed road from Webster to 441 South towards Franklin and also from Webster up to 74, basically the Webster-Klowee area up to 74 east of Silva. Those proposed bypasses were to lessen traffic on 107. The Franklin side of it got dropped off out of consideration, but the NC 107 Connector, the road from Webster-Klowee area up to 74, stuck around until recently. Went from being called the Southern Loop to being called the NC 107 Connector Project. A lot of people were opposed to that idea. There was never a distinct route for it, but Can Creek, Blant Branch, roads like that were discussed. There was a lot of opposition to it. And through the whole process that Rose is going to go into more detail on the local transportation planning process that involves community members and elected officials, the local community decided that they didn't want to build a new road. They wanted to fix the existing road, which is NC 107. So in 2011, NC DOT conducted a feasibility study at what it would look like to fix existing 107, the road that we're looking at now. There were some public hearings back during that time. And the feasibility study took a plan for that road and proposed it to the community. And that project showed that about 100 businesses would be impacted. That was back in 2011. And the town of Silva said, absolutely not. That would take away, you know, every business in the corridor back to the drawing boards. So at that point in time, our organization, the Southwestern Commission, and at that point in time, I was in Rose's job. So I was the Transportation Planner. We put together a committee. People from the town were on it. Commissioner Hensley, Dan Schaefer, your Public Works person, business, people who own businesses in the corridor, DOT people. It was a real mix of DOT and community members. And we spent about a year looking at the stretcher road and trying to define for DOT what the town really wanted out of this project. So that's a good reminder that the town has been working with DOT for eight-plus years on this project. This has been around a long time. It's gone through a lot of different planning stages. So in a nutshell, what that study concluded, there's a lot of data and crash data and transportation data that I won't go into here, but it basically concluded that the town's desire for this project was for the corridor to be an attractive gateway to Silva with a landscaped median, multimodal, so pedestrians and bicyclists could use it, safe, you know, less 90-degree turn into businesses, so there weren't so many rear ends. Safety was an aspect of it. And they really wanted, they prioritized traffic moving slower and safer over faster, which requires a wider road. The town said, we want this to be slower corridor where people are safe and it looks nicer and people of all modes of transportation are able to use it. That project, that report was given to DOT to consider in their further renditions of these plans that bring us here tonight. So that's the sort of 60,000-foot view. And now I'm going to pass it over to Rose Bogus, who is the Transportation Planner that's been working with the town of Silva for the past several years and the Department of Transportation. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the town of Silva for the opportunity to provide a little information to the public about this project tonight. Like Sarah said, we've been working on this project for many years. I'd like to provide some information about how these transportation projects are funded, go into a little bit of the debate about that connector bypass that is still being brought up today, and then also go over what sort of factors are considered when developing these projects. First of all, on the funding side, there was a new law passed in 2013 that changed how road projects are selected. Part of the selection process is based on measurable data such as traffic volumes, number of crashes, roadway characteristics, et cetera. And the other part of the selection process is based on local priority. And that's determined by the local elected officials and staff and also the local NC DOT divisions. So after the Southwestern Commission's corridor study in 2012 that Sarah mentioned, the local officials reached the consensus that improving NC 107 was the highest priority project in Jackson County. And at the time, they had to decide whether to focus on building a bypass or connector and/or fixing the existing road. And they decided that whether a connector was ever built or not, that the existing road as it was was still a real problem with both congestion and safety and aesthetics and all those other things. So the project also was, had the highest quantitative data score in the region based on its traffic volume and crash history. So those two things, high local priority, high quantitative data score, the project was successfully funded. So in the past few years, Jackson County has also updated their long-range transportation plan that includes what the future needs for the county are going to be. And so they again debated, even though the bypass was not funded, they debated whether or not to keep it in the long-range plans for Jackson County. A lot of people assumed that, it just seems very intuitive, and I've heard this in the discussion about the current project is, well, we wouldn't be in this mess if only we had built that bypass. So I just want to explain a little bit about the process that we went through. The steering committee made up of a diverse group of people from all over Jackson County. Over 20 people met for close to three years. There's a lot of meetings and we poured through a lot of data. And a lot of people assumed that this bypass would take a lot of traffic off of existing 107. And they assumed it would save you a lot of time on your trip to the east, you know. But when the engineers ran the travel demand modeling and all the magic that they do, where they're basically trying to predict future human behavior and how people are going to get from their residence to their job, to their shopping destination, to their school, they have ways of computing what the outcome will be. And what they found was that the bypass, the best possible scenario, took only about 7,000 to 9,000 cars off existing 107. So if it's projected to have about 40,000 cars by the design year, it would still have around 30,000 cars even with the bypass. And that's still a lot of traffic. They also found that the travel time savings was not as great as we thought, that it wasn't 10, 15 minutes, it was just a few minutes depending on the time of day. So the committee weighed all this out and they ultimately decided to not include a bypass in the long-range plan at this time because they wanted the county to focus on improving and modernizing and upgrading all of our existing roads, some of which are below standard, before they spent the money and the impacts on a new road. Now, I'm not saying that that conversation is over because I can guarantee you that it will come up again during the next iteration of the long-range plan, but just for now, they decided that they wanted to improve on existing infrastructure being improved before building new roads. And then the last thing I want to just mention is just how many factors that are considered when developing these projects. It's really complicated. There are not any easy answers. These teams of planners and engineers and designers have worked on these issues and problems for years trying to find, there's no magical solution that doesn't involve trade-offs. So they have to balance out the fact that this is the only way to get from the northern part of the county to the southern part of the county, the fact that we want good, safe access for our businesses, that this is kind of the gateway to Silva for a lot of people. People come to attend events at Western and they may never see beautiful downtown Silva and the courthouse. That's their impression of the town. And like, oh yeah, I've been to Silva. So that's just some of the things that have to be considered along with all the safety data and trying to make it a really long-range plan. They don't have to just think about what it is today and who's out there today, but this is the last major investment of infrastructure this corridor is going to see pretty much ever. And so it's very important to try to get it right. There's no going back and doing it again. So this is kind of a project that's going to be here for the next generation and the generation after that. And over, if you calculate out 40,000 cars a day, we're talking about over a billion users that are going to be using this corridor over the lifetime of the project. So I just wanted to kind of set the context about some of the factors that people are struggling with as they try to figure out how to maximize the benefits of this project and make it serve all users as well as possible. Thank you.
My name is Brian Birch. I'm the Division Engineer with the NC DOT. My office is here in Silva on the Webster Road. My office is the one who is responsible for the delivery of this project and for the development of this project. As Rose has mentioned, this project was put into the STIP. That's the program that we use to decide what project's going to be done. It was placed into our STIP in 2012. So it's been around a few years. I actually was involved in the project before that when it was going through some of the other planning phases of it. So I've been involved since 2010. So once it goes into the STIP, we hire a consultant to start working on the design. The consultant that we have hired is HDR. They're out of Raleigh. So they're the ones who are doing the design. They've been working on it for years. They did some of the feasibility studies. They're very familiar with all the issues that we've looked at when it comes to lane widths, medians, bicycle facilities, sidewalks, so all the bike path accommodations. They're familiar with all the rideaway issues, the utility issues, and everything that goes along with building a project. The current schedule for this project, and this is important, I know everyone's here is wanting to know how quickly things are going to happen. So the current schedule is to go to rideaway in January of 2020. So it's about 17 months from now. That means between now and then, we'll be developing those plans. And what you see on the wall are the 25% plans. That's somewhat of a first blush after a workshop that our consultant says, okay, we've taken the workshop drawings, we put them on some paper, here you go, DOT, you tell us what you think. So we've taken these plans, we provide comments back to them, and then they'll make adjustments until we ultimately get up to the rideaway document in 2020. So another thing that's important to understand is, these plans do not include any utilities. So we're working with utility owners, which are for the most part Duke, Frontier, and the town of Silva, to see where they can move their facilities within this highway, within our rideaway. What we have asked Duke to do, and they're considering it and they're seeing if it's something that's possible, is going underground with facilities. If we can do that, that will help us with impacts. If we can't do that, the impacts you see here on these plans will likely increase. So until we get that information, any decision that we make is somewhat premature. So I could go through these plans and I don't know where each person's parcel is, but I may be able to make adjustments based on these plans to say, I can save your parcel, I can save your business, I can save your property. But until I get those utility plans, I can guarantee you that. We make it to utility plans and everything that we've done to save your parcel has gone away. So until we get that information, any decision we make is really premature. And so we're waiting on those plans and we're hopeful to have those this winter. And as soon as we get those, again, we'll start going through the plans and making adjustments. So we'll start rideaway in 2020. Then you have the construction. When will construction start? Right now, the schedule is to start construction would probably be in January of 2022. So we're going to lead it to a contract in December of 2021. So we're still several years away from going to contract and doing any work out here. As was mentioned, I think it's been covered, but the purpose of the project is to relieve congestion on 107, improve mobility, and ultimately improve the safety of the corridor. Regardless of what we do, if you want to accommodate the traffic that's out there and the traffic that's forecasted to be out there, it's going to take two lanes in each direction, just like you have today. The difference that we had with our plans and what's out there today is we're taking out that center turn lane. Removing the center turn lane helps traffic move more efficiently through the corridor. Now, it is a little bit more of an inconvenience for people to have to U-turn to go back to a business. You don't have those left turns in, you don't have those left turns out. I understand that's an inconvenience, but when you look at it, studies will say that that improves the safety of a corridor. Because when you have a T-bone accident on those left movements, that's where you have your T-bone accidents, that's where you have injuries. So once you put that median in that prevents those left turns, then you're down to essentially rear-end accidents, which you have on this corridor today. In the last five years, we've had 257 accidents on this facility. That's a lot of crashes. That's a lot of crashes. But if you can limit those to just the rear end, then you're going to have lower injury crashes. And the thing that we want, and I'm sure everybody here would agree, when you're in a crash, ideally, you walk away. That's what we want as a DOT, that's what I think all the citizens are doing as well. So that median is there to protect mobility and improve safety. We also looked at four alternatives when we were deciding what cross-section to pick from. Again, two lanes in each direction, a median was in all of those alternatives. What we looked at that was different was how to accommodate bicycles. On two of those, we had a shared lane, which means that cyclists would have to share the lane with a car, and that's a 14-foot lane. The other two alternatives was that cyclists would have a bike lane, which is a five-foot lane. So there would be a 12-foot through lane and a five-foot bike path on each side. So you do have a little bit wider facility with that bike path. That was ultimately the cross-section that we picked. And the reason we did that is because cyclists are going to be hesitant to use any facility with this volume of traffic unless they have a protected or their own lane. So that is there for the cyclists, a five-foot striped bike lane. One other issue that we looked at was how to handle these major intersections. 23 Business, Walmart, 116, Coke Creek. We looked at doing a super street design, which meant that everybody would have to turn right and then you turn and go back. Or we looked at using traditional intersections. We selected the traditional intersections. So where you have signals today, you'll have signals once this project is completed. So you'll still be able to turn left out of those intersections. So that's how we come to the point of where we picked our cross-section. DOT, I mentioned, we're committed to this project. We've worked with the town of Silva and will continue to work with the town of Silva. We'll work with the citizens in the town of Silva, the property owners in the town of Silva, anyone else along the corridor that owns property. I don't know that your jurisdiction goes all the way to the end, but we're committed to working with the people here. We want to deliver a project that serves you, serves the town, and serves the people who are going to be here when I'm gone from this position and when many of us may not be here anymore. So that's our ultimate desire. And I think most people realize, if you look at what's there today, it's not serving us the way it should. It's a very congested, very narrow facility. I can speak for myself and everybody here can speak for themselves, but for me, I try to avoid it because I just don't feel safe driving down through there and trying to turn left in or turn left out. And people use the center lane to accelerate, to, you know, they pull in and they stop there. That's an illegal movement. Everybody does it. That's the only way you can and get out into the road, but it's not safe. When you're driving down through there, you're always thinking, where's the car coming from? Is it coming from a right? Is it coming from a left? The car that's in the center turn lane, is he turning left? Is he trying to get over in my lane? We want to eliminate all those conflicts so again, that it's safer. But I appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here. I know we're not going to be able to answer all your questions tonight because we're not going to answer questions tonight. But y'all know where my office is and I'm there occasionally. I'm on the road a lot, but you can stop by anytime. And myself, Jonathan Wooders, the project engineer, will be glad to give you as much information as we can and help you any way we can. Thank you.
My name is Jake Howard. I live in Webster, but I've been working in Silva all my life and I own property in Silva on 107. And I want to thank the town for the opportunity of letting us speak tonight. And I want to thank the DOT for being here and also the ladies at Southwestern Commission for your hard work over very many years. I know that you will see this project through. And I'm not here to try to kill this project. I'm here with the Smart Roads Alliance, which was formed years ago to stop the four-lane highway between Dillsborough and 107. And we were successful in that mainly because we had a group of people who would come to meetings like this and the DOT listened. They listened to what you had to say about what the plan was and they decided eventually that that was not a good plan. So what I'm hoping to do tonight is to just get into the weeds a little bit, just to show you that the plan that we've got right now is underway. I know it's only the 25% plan, but you start somewhere and you go forward. And we've got what we've got right here. And I'm going to step over to the...
I'm telling you, this hair works fast.
I just want to... What I want to show to begin with is that these plans, in some ways, are just not workable. They need to be changed. I've heard over and over, so I was getting ready for this presentation, that the plans aren't done yet. We can make changes. Well, that's a good thing because these plans that we have now are, in very many ways, very bad. And the first one I want to show to you is here where the 107 crosses over Scotts Creek, but the bridge has moved. And the bridge has moved and also it indicates that some...
And the bridge has moved and also it indicates that some of the road that was being used is no longer going to be used. So they're not using the full width of that bridge. Instead, they're moving over in front of the coffee shop, and there's a sidewalk there. So you're not going to be able to pull into the coffee shop, you're not going to be able to pull into Innovations Brewery either because there's going to be a sidewalk there. You'll have to go down to this part right here. And as you know, at the coffee shop, everybody pulls in and you wait until the traffic's out and then you pull into the street and you go out. That's the way you do it at Innovations as well. You will not be able to do that with the sidewalk. Moving the bridge this direction, instead of using this present space that you have for a bridge, makes that a problem. It certainly also makes it a problem for this building right here, the front of which is taken right off. This is the Wholesale Investments LLC where they have lighting and plumbing. The plumbing is over here. This building right here is completely cut off. The front of it is missing, it's gone. Whether or not that's a total take into that building, I don't know, but it possibly could render the whole thing unusable. And the road continues to go over to Speedy's Pizza, and I kind of like eating at Speedy's Pizza. I probably won't be able to after this road took off this part of the building and then took off that part of the building and puts a sidewalk here so that you have to enter over here, go around under the canopy of this gas station, and then come around back this way to park. That's just not going to be a very pleasant experience. And it also, there's nothing planned for what has to be the most aggravating intersection in the town. Perfect place for a roundabout, right there. The traffic coming this way would simply have to go this way. And then, if you were over here trying to get onto this road, instead of having to dodge traffic, which is what you have to do, you'd simply go around that roundabout and keep on going. So that opportunity doesn't even appear to be under consideration, and I think that's I think that's poor planning, I think that's a bad design. Can you take it to the next? Now, I'm not going to go through every sheet. Back on the 26, I went through about five sheets. I'm just going to go through two tonight because I know there's a lot of people in here who want to talk, but I want to show, again, getting into the weeds, how some of these plans are going to affect you, unless they're changed. Okay, this is the next bridge that crosses over the Scotts Creek. And again, the bridge is right here located now. And rather than using that space, they abandoned that and they've moved over here. There's a great deal of twosa infrastructure right here that this road is going to go over. That's going to have to be moved. And then, once it crosses the creek here, the first building it comes to, it knocks the front right off, just completely eliminates a quarter of that building. Can that be fixed? Maybe it can, I don't know. It appears that the easement for the drive-through on Rite Aid is going to be gone, so there's not going to be any drive-through on that. And then, if you keep on going east, this building here is going to be gone. It's just going to be blown totally away. And this controlled access right here in front of Kelsave, not Kelsave, yeah.
That's Kelsave.
Yeah, sorry. And the Country Cover and the Dress Shop, that's going to be a controlled access. And so the only way you'll be able to get into that property right there, first of all, this parking is all gone, all the way down through there. You'll have to come over here to come back to park in front of Kelsave. But you're not going to be parking anywhere along in here. It'll just be over here. Again, it's my view, and I have, I'm not an engineer, but I've studied these maps for 35 years, I know what I'm talking about. If we don't stop this stuff from happening this way, all of these numbers that are here, all of these stations that are dotted in, all of those places where the Department of Transportation has identified, all of those places are on the map, on the ground, and that's where they're starting. They're not starting somewhere else, they're starting with what they've got right now. And again, if there was ever a perfect place for a roundabout, that would be it. And if you think roundabouts are difficult to get around, they're not. I lived in England for a year and I learned how to drive through a roundabout, and that was on the wrong side of the road. You can actually increase the number of lanes with the roundabout located about where this store is, and then traffic, instead of stopping here at the red light and waiting forever, or, you know, you can race down this back road this way and beat that red light by about 10 cars, we all do that. So if that was done, you would also eliminate the necessity of taking this parking lot right here, which, in my opinion, because it's a controlled access, will harm that business severely. And, you know, the Kellys have been here for 50 years, serving our community, and I'm sure they don't appreciate the idea that their business is going to be affected that much. If you take this radius right here and draw a circle and plop it down right there, it's the same radius that's used there, it's the same radius that's used here, there's plenty of room for that roundabout to work. So, again, I don't want to go through too many examples here, and I don't want to...
So... I just wanted to, I think you can hear me, I've been accused of having a big mouth plenty of times, so... That's what I'm talking about, I can't... Roundabout there. Roundabout... Roundabout here. They're brown, you just have to get around them. They can be split. You can have a train track go right through the roundabout and the roundabout still be functional. So I just want to make the point that we can have a better plan.
The one we've got now is not sufficient for our community, it's the wrong one, but this community's got to step up and participate in saying, here's what we want. Because if you don't step up and participate, then the Department of Transportation is lawfully charged with producing what it thinks is the best road. Smart Roads Alliance is here to help with that. We've contacted Asheville Design Center, and Chris Choyle is going to speak next. And what I urge the town to do is to allow them to work with the Smart Roads Alliance and the DOT and to come up with something better, something that'll work, something that doesn't destroy businesses, something that we like and achieves all the good things that you want to achieve, safety, it looks better, all those things can be done, but not that plan. Thank you.
I'm Chris Choyle, I'm the Director of the Asheville Design Center. I have been for the last 10 years. Thank you very much for inviting me here tonight. I've worked with SARA in the Southwest Commission in Robbinsville in years past, I've worked with the DOT, not this division, but Division 13 out of Asheville, for the past 10 years. And just to give you an idea of how the Design Center operates, how we came into being, we formed 12 years ago when DOT had proposed designs for the I-26 connector. We felt that it hadn't adequately addressed the concerns of the community. It did very well, I think, by cars and trucks that were trying to go through Asheville, but for the community itself, it wasn't serving our needs. So a group of volunteer architects, landscape architects, engineers, planners got together and crafted their own design. That design ultimately was adopted by DOT in 2008, and they are now, well, 2010, and now they're working towards implementing that design. In this case, the Design Center now has merged with Mountain True, a regional nonprofit organization that serves greater western North Carolina. We have worked outside of Asheville in the past, but we have the opportunity, we recognize here, to be able to perhaps lend a helping hand. We work by invitation only, we don't identify a problem and then just insert ourselves into the process and insist on being part of that process. We really need the cooperation of the Commission, of the community, of the DOT, to be able to work together and explore some potential design solutions that might form a stronger community and a better road. I can't stand here today and say that we've got a silver bullet and that we know how to solve the problems that Jay had highlighted and that DOT has been examining for years. For all I know, we could examine this and find that there's no better solution on the table. But we do offer those services, we have transportation planners, we have engineers and architects, landscape architects that can contribute, and we offer to do that at no charge. We're here to serve the community, we're here to build stronger communities, and we have an opportunity to help translate a lot of the language that DOT deals with on an everyday basis. And I understand that looking at a site plan does not immediately make a lot of sense to folks if they don't look at them every day, but we can work with the community to be able to help translate that. And then we can explore options. If this option for roundabout is one that has a lot of support, we can explore the viability of that, we can make sure that whatever solutions we come up with work for both the town and for DOT's regulations. And that's essentially how we work. So if given the opportunity, we'd love to be able to work with y'all. If not, no hard feelings, but we're here and ready, willing, and able. Thanks.
That concludes our informational presentation. We have quite a few people that want to speak, so I just ask everybody to bear with us. Amanda will be our timekeeper, again, to get everybody in that wants to speak. I ask that you limit your time to three minutes, and we won't cut you off mid-sentence, but just know when she raises her hand or her timer goes off that you finish your sentence, and we would appreciate it, so we can move to the next person. The first person I have, and we're doing the people that own both property and a business, is Robert Kelly.
Get over here. This room got crowded. All right. My name is Robert Kelly, and I'm here tonight with my parents, Bob and Jeannie Kelly, and my brother Mike Kelly right there against the wall. Bob came to Silver back and bought Humper's Drugs back in 1966. Since then, he's filled over 10 million prescriptions for this community and has taken care of several generations of families. That's 52 years we've been open. We also own Country Cover, Health Food Store, and Chris Mark Fashions, both opened for 42 years. We've remained quiet so far, waiting for the plans to develop and come out. But now, as one of the largest commercial parcels in the path of this, we need to voice our concerns. I would like to mention that I heard people say that they want the business people to look out for our interest and our input. We have yet to be contacted by anyone from the town or DOT to talk about our piece of property. We have two more generations coming up in the family to run this property. But right now, we're stuck in limbo, business plan's on hold. We have plans to upgrade the exterior of the strip center, among other things. We can't do any of that right now until we see what's coming. And we can all agree, 107 could use safety improvements, but at what cost of the business community? Since the plans became public and the potential impact to at least 55 businesses, people are rightly concerned. We believe safety can be improved with a smaller footprint. We don't believe an aesthetic large median or bike lane are needed to improve safety on the road. This project is too wide for the business street with the terrain limitations we have. And let me go back to that DOT study of 2011. I'd like to quote Mayor Moody, two letters to the DOT, to show where the town stood then. He said, "We would like NC-107 to remain a four-lane city street with little or no increase in width. Increasing to six or seven lanes will have a negative impact to the business growth of Silver." And in a separate letter he wrote, "I would like to reiterate the Silver Board of Commissioners desire to maintain NC-107 as a city street with little or no increase in width. NC-107 is the commercial growth area in Silver." That's obviously changed now, aesthetics and everything else. So far, most public comments from the town seem to be refuting things in the newspaper. Communication is our big thing here, maybe saying a story's overblown about the 55 businesses. Instead of downplaying the situation or coming up with plans after we lose our business, we think the town should be trying to work with us now to keep what we have. If you end up, one of the businesses is taken, it will be a life-altering event. You will have to negotiate with DOT, try to operate during the construction, possibly hire an attorney and go to court. On top of that, you'll have to close your business that you've spent your life building. Your business pays taxes, people salaries, takes care of your families, kids, and grandkids. This is a huge deal that the town hasn't spoke about yet. In closing, we believe the town board has a responsibility to look at every option out there to help lessen the impact of the business community. Go and visit the businesses, maybe set up a designated person from the town to contact us and talk to each person about their own concerns. And as far as for us, my dad's worked very hard to build his business and serve this community for over half a century, and we want better communication.
Thank you. Next, I have Michael Kelly.
I don't have much to say after that, so my big brother said all right there.
All right, thank you. Rick Bryson?
I don't know if I can get over there or not, maybe I can stay around here. My name is Richard Bryson, I have a car washed beside Weenies. I don't really know what to say other than thank Jay for helping us this year. I don't know what to do without his, working around and helping us a little bit. It's just not me at the car wash, you know, it's my family, my grandkids. I've got about six, eight people that really need to work for me, and I don't know what's going on. I called out at the state and they said, I don't really know what to say. They said, "I'll be getting back with you in a month or so, I've heard nothing from nobody. I've talked to a couple of board members to try to lead me in the right direction on what to go and what to do." And like I said, what, today, I wouldn't know where to go, what direction to go. But I just don't know what's going on with a little car wash. I know it don't mean much to the state, it does to me. And I don't know what's going on, I just like to know what's going on. I try to sell the car wash, but when people come to me and they say, "Rick, what's going on with this road thing?" I say, "I don't know, brother. I'm just gonna, I don't know what to tell you, you know, we just have to wait and see." And so, nobody's too excited about buying anything, just don't know what's going on in front of them. But anyway, that's where I stand. I just don't know what's going on, I don't know what to tell my family, I don't know what to tell the people that work for me, and I'd just like to know a little bit, that's all.
Next, Kent Crawford.
Cranford. I'll stand over here too, I'm loud enough. So I'm Kent Cranford, I own Motion Maker Bicycle Shop here in town. And I'm just here to basically state what a lot of my customers and I believe is that bicycles are a part of this plan and they're part of transportation infrastructure. I don't want anybody's business to go away. I don't want any road to be so wide that it has to have that happen. But I do want to see Silver as a community improve like I've seen other communities that did embrace bicycle infrastructure, like Revard and Traveler Trust on South Carolina. They both have pretty impressive bike lanes and infrastructure for that now. So just going to put that out there and say that, and that's where we're at with that. Thank you.
Next, Kelly Robinson.
I've lived in Silver since, I don't know, 1983, when my dad started the paper mill. I've traveled all over the northern hemisphere working. I've been in several third-world countries where roundabouts really work. They have been in use in these little tiny countries for years, way before you ever saw them in the United States. I know we need some, I live on Hensley Circle, and I'm right on the edge of this project. I am in and out of town every day, several times a day I do work in, right here in town. I see one of the biggest problems we have with the safety is not so much the volume of traffic, but the speed of the traffic. You know, if I, I'll go from my shop down to Backstreet where I've got a job now. If I do the speed limit, I get people flipping me off, shooting, you know, blowing horns, and it's terrible. Go down to Innovations and sit there at Pot Times, the new pizza place, and have something to eat and watch the traffic go by, it will totally scare you. I know a lot of folks know where Clyde, North Carolina is. I had opportunity to live there for several years before moving to Silver, and they have a reputation. You don't speed through Clyde. If you go through Clyde over the speed limit, you're gonna get a ticket. Everybody in Haywood County knows that, and I would like to see Silver get that reputation. More patrols, more tickets, it would generate income for the city. And another thing with access, if you try to get out on 107 from any of the businesses, coffee shop, Innovations, or any of the rest of them, it's just, you can't do it. The speed is too fast, and if you pull out, that's when you get run over. I've got a few ideas. I've looked at some of the drawings, and some things that would eliminate some of the traffic would have back entrances from these businesses to be able to get down to a red light to be able to get out. One example would be a connector from Ash Luke to Evans Road. Would eliminate a lot of the school traffic, to be able to get to the new bridge and to be able to go out towards Webster and hit the roundabout or back toward Cooley. Then, some of the other roads up behind Subway, I don't know the names of them, they almost connect by only one small piece of property. If some of those roads would connect, you would be able to get out and go across and come out in a different area of town. I think there's a lot that we can do with smart roads and not new roads. I know we have to do something, but there's a lot of little roads that could be widened. Kane Creek to Blanton Branch would be a good example. I just think, and the biggest thing with the safety is the speed in Silver, and it's all over town.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I see that are both, have a business and property, have their business on their property. Is there someone I missed?
Yes. Gene Liddleton.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen and the town board, my father came from Nigger Skull to 107 in around 1938. He started getting $100 a month from River Ops and Soul Mill and dry-packed it to build his house. From there, he got one day's work at Lead Corporation, and from there, all the businesses from where the big signs are, Champion Credit Union, throughout to the Camper Cover Place is our properties. It goes all the way to Hall Heights subdivision. Are we impacted? Definitely. But my proposal is, and I spoke to Jay, I think, Sunday morning, put a median barrier down in the middle of the road, put two 12-foot lanes like they ought to be, it's at 11 and a half, as you have them constructed now, put four-foot bicycle lane, then you've got X number of feet over to the curvy golden line. No businesses are affected, no employees lose their job, because on that quarter, there is no property available or hire or force in that will accommodate the tax base of the town of Silver and the county of Jackson. So, please consider it in the sake of all those workers. It don't bother me. I've been retired right now 26 years. So, but there are a lot of people out there, and I've been talking to those owners, and I can get you the actual number of owners and I'll put it in the search bar. So, please, consider the things that we're talking about. Move the roundabout, if you're gonna put one in, or 23 business from 107, put one up there at Cope Creek or the Bank of America, Los SunTrust Bank Office. Move the next one, extend the box of coal. Go out there to where the, I guess it's the Ford Place and Sonic and et cetera there, you put a roundabout there, and go out to where the service station out there is closed. Used to be, we used to call it the Six Pack Special. The baddest life to go through that line, so you won't see him by here. It's become, I mean, you know, if you drink a little, you want a little privacy, I guess. Let somebody just turn it up and drink it in there. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
And next, I will move to the group of property owners that are affected.
Yeah, I got Charlie Schmidt's Speedy's Pizza. I got Skip somehow.
I have that, but are you, do you own that property?
No, we don't own the property. I mean, we don't.
I'm trying to go with those things like that. So, now we're property owners? Property owners, yeah. Jay Spirit.
Well, I just wanted to, I'm not gonna say anything, I'm not gonna get down in the weeds at all. I do want to second what Jay said about the roundabouts. I think that's an excellent idea. I thought that all along, especially at the Bogarts intersection, 23, 107. There are lots of opportunities for compromise in this plan, and I just wanted to mainly say, I've worked with Brian Birch and DOT on a couple of different projects. As the, my involvement with the Cullowhee Revitalization Organization recently, we've worked with DOT to do some design changes on the bridge crossing Cullowhee, or crossing the river at Cullowhee. And I just wanted everybody to know, I have found them to be really helpful, very considerate, willing to listen, and willing to alter their plans, which they did. They altered the plans for that bridge in a couple of different ways that benefited the greenway that's gonna be coming in and some other things. So, I just wanted to sort of put that on your radar, that these guys are very easy to work with, and I think they will listen to you. This is a very healthy process, I think. I do think that communication is the key to this. I think, you know, everybody's not gonna be happy with the outcome of this. It's gonna be disruptive just by the nature of the project. But I think that DOT will listen to you, and there'll be a lot of changes to this initial plan, and I think most people will be happy with it when it's ultimately done. I do appreciate the history lesson, also. There's been a long history on this project. This is not something that's come up at the last minute. There's been multiple hearings already, public hearings, on this project at SCC and other places, and I think that just goes, again, to what I was saying, that DOT has been willing to listen, is wanting to take feedback, and it's just gonna be a very healthy project for the town of Silver. I also think, I've been involved in economic revitalization of Silver and the area for over 30 years, and I can tell you, this kind of communication and this kind of project in particular is gonna be very healthy for the town. I think it's gonna jumpstart a lot of economic development in Silver, which is gonna be a really good thing. Any kind of major infrastructure project like this will do that. And I think our chore is, our goal is, just has to be to stay together on this, not point fingers, not be upset with each other, and work collaboratively in a sort of positive way. I think so far, what I'm hearing here tonight is, kind of reinforces that. So, I urge you all to kind of stay in the saddle together. We can get through this, and I think it's gonna be a very positive outcome. Thank you.
Next, I have Ted Edwardor. Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
And have I left out any property owner that wanted to speak that I do not have a check Next, we'll go to business owners, and the first one I have is Carol Smith.
I'd like to stand here.
Okay.
I have worked on 107 for about 30 years, lived there now for 12 years, and I respect the opinions of everybody in this room. As they just said, we're not, everybody's not gonna get what they want, what they like. But whatever we get on 107 is definitely needed today, as fast as you can get, you know. I would suggest that we reconsider doing that bypass from somewhere around Evans Road to Locust Creek across to 704, Evans Branch. You know as well as I do, if you're going from point A to point B, if you're traveling, you wanna get there as quick as you can, then you just wrap. And this would solve the problem of some of the traffic on 107 coming into Silver. What we're proposing to do here, I don't think will ever solve the traffic congestion. It's going to take some work on 107 plus that bypass.
Oh, thanks, thank you.
Okay. Jason Queen.
I'm Jason Queen. I'm one of the owners of the Malice Club Grill. This is my business partner. I don't think I could possibly say it as good as Mr. Kelly. I just, I came here because I just wanted to hear some answers, kind of figure out what's going on with the whole thing. You hear so many things, and I just ask that there be some communication between the DOT, the town, and the local business owners to, as some proper forum to figure out what's best for the town and what's best for the business and everybody involved. Thank you.
Next, I have Joe or, and Laura Lenders.
Linders.
Linders.
Hi, my name's Joe Linders. I own the University vape shop right across from Walmart. I have not led here 43 years. We moved here from Florida four years ago when we retired. Wanted to open some nice businesses, wanted to get people to stop smoking cigarettes, so we opened vape shops. We've helped thousands of people get off cigarettes on something safer. We have wonderful young people here in Silver. We love Silver. This is one of the most beautiful towns ever. I don't care what they say about the roadways. The center of town of Silver has moved. It has moved towards Walmart. It happens everywhere. It happened in Florida where we lived. You've got a beautiful downtown area, you've got a library. Yes, but that's no longer the center of town. So, what's being proposed is to destroy the heart of the town, the center of town, and rip all the businesses out there, whichever ones they choose that don't feel that they need to be there, and close off access, and leave the downtown area, which pays way less in taxes than all of us do that are in that area. I don't think the expansion is properly done. I don't have the answer of how you should do it. I don't know if it's roundabouts or whatever it is, but the plans that I've seen so far are not very good plans. We use local vendors. We hire dozens of bright, young people and give them good salaries between $25,000 and $45,000 a year. We're not McDonald's. We hire people and pay them big money. And they do a good job for us, and we love working with them, but if you were to close down our business, odds are we'd move out of Silver. And then those people who were students here, who went to college here, would then lose their jobs and have to go to a lower-paying job someplace else, because my industry is very specific. You can't take my training from my job, from my positions in my stores, and use it at Walmart or wherever. We have a very specific training program. I like being here, and I love all of western North Carolina, and I just think that if you put your heads to it, you can get a better plan. I just don't think that, there are very many elected officials involved in this plan. There are people that are volunteers that get on committees, and there are state employees, things like that, but by and large, if there's something wrong with a local situation, you can have a local referendum. But when it's a state situation, there's not much you can do about it. You can't all get together and say, "Let's vote on the road," because they don't want to hear it. So, since that's what's happening, maybe we should get more elected officials who can vote in or out of office, get them involved, because we have nothing to say about the state employees. We can't do anything. They screw the whole town up, there's nothing we can do about it. But I love you all. Thank you for showing up tonight, because I think shows everybody loves Silver like I do.
Thanks. Hi. First off, I want to start, Jean Ensley, who we read from, I own property in town, just not where the business is. That's why I got a little confused there, but she asked me to thank Jay Cowan on her behalf and all of our behalf for stepping up and allowing us, the people, they have a voice in this that is gonna, that could affect us so bad. With that, as most of you know, I have a petition going around to leave West Main Street out of this. You know, it'd be great to have four lanes and two sidewalks, but it's all funneling down to two lanes right there at the coffee shop at that bridge anyways. So, we've got three lanes and a sidewalk on one side that's wide enough for bikes to go by. You leave it the way it is, put a nice new paint job on it, and you just saved all the businesses on West Main Street. Now, the whole project to begin with, I find it funny that Mr. Birch said, "I try to avoid town," and I don't know what computer study that says, "If you get 25% of the cars off the road, it's not gonna affect traffic," just logically speaking. If you take one out of four cars off the road by building a bypass so Cullowhee can access 74, that right there is gonna help traffic. And if we know getting that off, that cars, we know that will do it. So, why not start there and get cars off 107, and then assess 107 after that? And then, if it does go through, there are much better ways as far as using the median, than just have 17 feet of grass there. This summer, I was lucky enough to travel around France, and that's a road just like this, we look probably the same, right in the middle of town. There's a massive grass median, and we're running right down the middle of it with trees and everything, bike lanes and sidewalks. So, that would take how many feet on either side? You got everything running right down the middle on this beautiful grass median, and there's designated turnarounds, and the bikes and people walking. We had to stop, wait on the light, cross with everybody, with all the cars. So, there are much, much more efficient ways to do this as Jay is trying to do. But that's just the main thing, is I would really like West Main Street, and so far over 1,200 people also feel West Main Street should be left out of this, and then, as I said, I think the smartest way is do what we know will get cars off the road first, then see what's left after you do that. Thank you.
Business owner, but it's not on that script.
Have I left anyone else off that is a business owner affected on 107? Oh, no? Then we'll go to the general public, and that, Pat Purdy.
I've lived here for 35 years, and I consider this to be my home. Many of the businesses that are being affected, I feel like they are members of my own family. I've dealt with them for a long time. I don't have a lot of school smarts. I'm just a simple person. I want what's best for us, but I don't see the plan that's on the table right now is the right one for us. the right one for us. We can do so much better, and we need to do it. We need to save the people that have been here for a long, long time, family businesses. We owe a lot to them, and I just want to thank you for being able to speak here this evening. Thank you.
Next, we have Jackie Moss.
How are you? Hello.
Okay. Yes, sir, thank you. Diane Melton.
I'll pass.
James Wallace.
I'd like to pass, but before I do that, Jay, I really want to thank you and everybody who's been speaking there. This has really been an eye-opener, and the problem exists. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Murphy, or Tony Murphy.
Hi, my name is Kevin Murphy. I've been here about 10 years, and I listen to this program here. I have one suggestion that I don't suggest to engineers about that project, especially open front of Speed Pizza. We're talking about moving businesses, and we have a railroad track that goes through there. It uses one train a week. Why don't we move the railroad track? (laughter)
Yes, ma'am.
The reason I came tonight is because I read an article in the Herald, and one of the council people on board tonight had mentioned that they didn't think there was anyone going to show up. No, we hadn't heard any complaints from any constituents staying there. So the reason I'm here tonight is to say, why don't you call some of your constituents? Why don't you get out on the street and talk to people, and find out what it is they want of you? Thank you, Jesus.
I'm sorry about pronouncing names incorrectly. Mark? Betty Dishman.
I'd just like to say, I've been a resident of Jackson County 23 years, in the downtown area for about 15 years. I'm so happy to see so many people out tonight. And I drive this road to Culloway every day to my job at Western, and I agree something needs to be done. And I'm not a engineer or a planner, but I don't think this plan is very good. The remarks about roundabouts are good. We've got one at the entrance through the university. They're not hard to learn to use. Need more of those. And I'm just for as much preservation of businesses as possible. I know nothing's perfect, but these people have been here a long time, and they provide a good service to our community. So we've got to, I'm going to advocate for them.
Hey, everybody. I'm tempted to come up to the microphone, just so everyone in the kitchen can hear, because that's where I've been listening to. I really appreciate, obviously, I don't need a microphone, but I really appreciate everybody coming out. And for those of you who have been stating that, you know, it'd be nice to be involved in the process, I wonder where y'all were at all the other meetings that have been held throughout the county about this process, that where we got to choose different options. I also feel like I'm one of the stakeholders who weren't listed on the original stakeholders, because I'm one of the 257 people who have been involved in an accident the last five years, as I was heading south on Highway 107, and somebody was trying to turn right into, go to Little Caesar's to get that $5 pepperoni pizza. Somebody was trying to turn out and make a left out of there, and the person turning in probably was hangry. They didn't have that word when I was a kid. I liked it. And so they waved the person out. I was coming up, doing the speed limit in the left lane, and got creamed, sent in oncoming traffic, and looked up, and there was a dump truck, like slammed on the brakes, coming at me. So, traffic safety is a very serious issue on Highway 107, but not in downtown. I'm with Charlie and others thinking about needing to address these separate parts separately. You know, roundabouts are a great way to move through traffic. I think it's very important. For those who are opposed to bike lanes, I ask, are you also opposed to sharing the existing lane with a bicyclist? Because people would use the bikes more if there was a safe way to do so. And currently, it's hardly even safe to drive in a car on Highway 107 in that area, let alone on a bicycle. And not even looking at the poverty issue addressed with pedestrian and bicycle traffic, not everybody who lives in our community can afford to have a vehicle to drive, and they still have to get to work. And so there are solutions that need to be addressed. But I, again, just invite everyone who's coming out reacting to the reactionary headline in the Silver Herald about 55 businesses gone. That was, you know, a little bit, and maybe it was effective, because it got everybody out of this meeting. And I encourage you all to stay involved in this local community. I've been to a lot of meetings in this room, but this is the first one I've spent in the kitchen.
The next person is Andy Jordan.
Say, did you want to? Okay. Yeah. Yes. Lots of great points. I like, I'll try not to just say what I like, but try to say something new. I've been a cyclist for transportation and for business, and worked in vape shops 35 of my 54 years. It's a healthy part of life. It's an old and it's a current form of transportation. People that don't have much money can get around a little bit quicker without, get to work on time. We have so many developments like the Greenway. Look how much that's being used. I bet none of us thought that we would be getting more than 10,000 users. So, no, let's don't, even if you're not a cyclist. You know, folks are out there walking, pushing their walkers. We need to sort of allow for more healthy aspects of life rather than just getting and speaking cars and hating everybody. So, you know how it gets, is that anonymity. So, I just, it's a plea, but I know so many cyclists from throughout my life, different states, in this room, and it's, it's just, I just want to advocate for that part. Cycling, walking, there's going to be a lot more residences, apartment buildings that is built. So wouldn't it be great if you could just go walk to the, walk to one of these great businesses down there? And certainly, I don't want anybody's business to be impacted. I'm now a business owner, and I understand more about what it takes, all the years of work. So I just want folks to hear that about the cyclists that do, that just, I hope you don't see them as a nuisance. I'm a person. I'm somebody's kid. And a lot of those people are people's parents. And I'm out there, you know, just trying to get the lay, and trying to be healthy, get from point A to point B, build, support businesses. So, I think I've said it. Then there are a lot, there are other options for how to make a bike lane or bike head corridor safer, rather than just a bike lane like WCU. I won't ride in that bike lane out by WCU, because it's right next to a car stolen 55, 60 miles an hour, people getting missed. I want to see people getting busted for looking at this, doing end speed, yes. Safety, slow down. We're not here to, if you want to live that kind of life, go live in a plant. Yeah, so I know that you're aware of all the safer, more visible bike pedestrian corners. You've got to look outside what we are already familiar with. I think that's all.
Thank you. Scott Wallings.
Hi, my name is Scott Wallings. I just wanted to say how proud I am to live in a country that has this type of forum. I don't think in many places in the world you can actually have comment or influence on what government does, so what a wonderful thing. Warren Buffett said, "When you find yourself in a leaky boat with holes, you're better off buying a new boat, rather than trying to leak, you know, plug the holes." This plan is full of holes. I've got an idea. Let's scrap it. We don't need the state to build this community. We need a forum of one-third citizens, one-third property owners, and one-third elected officials to start all over again. And the first premise should be that one business is affected. There's absolutely no reason for any jobs to be lost, or any business owner that has spent decades building the tax base and the citizenry of this, of this community to be affected. I was embarrassed when I read this plan, just take Speedy's as one example. And, and, and why don't we start all over again? Let's tell the state to go back to Charlotte. We can do this. We don't need to rebuild the whole thing. We, we can just, just, just the biggest problem is really just the 23 and 107. Let's put a little circle there, you know? Let's do this piece by piece. We don't need a multi-year process. The reason I came here.
That was, that was Pat, no, I'm sorry. Apologize.
How much time I've got?
A minute.
A minute, ten seconds.
Minute and a half.
I live on River Road. You've probably seen me and my two dogs playing on the two fields there, on the, on the straightaway. It's 35 miles one way, 40 the other. People routinely go 55 to 70 on that straightaway. And we are barraged with quarry trucks. From 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night, I've counted 120 quarry trucks, and there are bicyclists on that road, and kids trying to cross to get to the river. The reason I haven't purchased that property was because, what if this plan goes forward? Was it the project director, I'm sorry about your name, Burke, was it? He says, "I avoid the road." Well, you and about 1,000 people a day avoid the road and go right down River Road at 60, 70 miles an hour. There's no patrolling there. There's nothing, I've seen, I've, I've told you what I've seen on that road. It is such a dangerous situation, even today. Everyone who lives on River Road, is there anybody else here on River Road? Has had a white knuckles with these quarry trucks coming, and, and, and the drivers have their head like this for the, you know, for their cellphone, three feet over the double yellow line. There's no shoulder, there's no way to get off the road, and it's already dangerous. And if this happens, how many more? Hundreds of vehicles? Every commercial driver knows Culloway to Dillsborough, or to Bryson, or Cherokee, take River Road. There's no policing, the, the speed limit's a joke, there's no, no red lights, no stoplights. What's going to happen to River Road during this construction? Well, everyone's going to avoid Main Street. So let's start it all over. Let's take this leaky boat and push it off into, into the lake, let's start from scratch. Let's, let's start with the principle that no business is affected. And let's take it bit by bit. We don't need $15 million to rebuild this community. We need some common sense, some courtesy to the business owners, and, and some rethinking of this process. Thank you for letting me participate.
My name is Sarah Conway. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. How many people want this rotten project? Throw hands.
Not this one.
All right. You know, it's funny, the engineer said, "We won't answer questions tonight, but we're going to continue to work with Silva." Note to the engineer, this is Silva, okay? Silva doesn't want your rotten plan, okay? All due respect, it was done in a sloppy fashion, you know, these rotten plants across the walls, if you tried to make an attempt, it's just a lazy effort. You know, and the thing that's the most disheartening is that you're not communicating with the people.
At all.
You're not communicating with Mr. Kelly, whose whole family started here. I mean, this is just an outrage. And you kind of like backhandedly said, "We're not sure if we're going to compromise the businesses or the parcels or the personal property." Are you kidding me? Those are the first people you should have come to talk to. How dare you? This is, I mean, this is a rotten plan. You better go back to the drawing boards. You better have a bunch of charrettes. I don't know what the guy in Raleigh's doing, or whoever the consultant is, I don't see him around tonight. But this is just a complete and total joke. And then the other comment, "This is going to be great for economic development." How? These people are losing their, their whole economy. Support your communities, folks. This is horrible. You should all be ashamed of yourselves and put more time in. This is terrible. Thank you for letting me speak.
I don't know how I'm going to top that. (laughter) So, I won't try, but I'm, I'm from Glenville, and we're getting ready in Cashers, and we're getting ready to have the same kind of discussion about our crossroads and stuff. And this is an eye-opener, and I'm going to take this word back up there, that if the community doesn't get involved, something's going to be rammed down your throat, and you better speak up, and you better start, like the gentleman said, start at the very beginning. And take home one thing, you've got to communicate with your people. And I, I'm appalled that none of your business owners knew about this whole thing. They, they didn't know. And that, that's awful. So that, that's all I've got to say. And thank you very much for everybody's speaking. It's great.
Thank you very much. And now, we have Representative Mike Clampett here that would like to.
I think what's said, has been said, has been said the best way it could be said. The bottom line is, we have 55 businesses that have been in business in 50 years or plus. We need to take and listen to their needs. While we do need to improve 107, because it is a safety concern and there are issues with that, we don't need to take and have a 12-foot median and an I-40 from downtown Silver all the way up to Smoky Mountain. Bottom line is, I'm looking at the businesses and economic impact of that. With 55 businesses, we look at the tax revenue for the state, tax revenue for the county, and also the jobs. The jobs are important. With these 55 businesses that are mom and pops, and Speedy's is a good example, I've met with them at their location. These are mom and pop businesses that will go out of business and not come back in business in Jackson County, period. So, I'm against the project completely. I'm going on record with that. By the way, I'm on the appropriations committee. And I say I pull strings, but the bottom line is, currently with that. And let me say thank you for the work y'all have done, DOT. I'm not here to bash you. We've, we really need everything that you've done, especially with the recent storms and all the bad weather we had with the flooding. And thank you for letting everybody come and speak tonight. The venue, I figured, would be big. It is big. We need a bigger location next time, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll just make that as a solid camp, please, like at Southwestern. But thank you. I appreciate the time that you've let me have to speak tonight. Folks, I'm on your side. And you know what the seven most dreaded words that are heard by the public? "I'm from Raleigh, and I'm here to help you." (laughter) I'll leave it with that, because I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that to you. I'm one of us, and I'm, I appreciate your time, and let's do the right thing.
Erin Lee Littlefield.
My name's Erin. I'm a teacher in Cashers. I live in Culloway. I'm an alumni from Western Carolina University. I believe this is bigger than just a Silva issue. I think this is a Jackson County issue. I think it's a Western Carolina issue as a whole. We deal with commerce coming up from Atlanta and then coming all throughout. We've got tourists coming from all over the southeast through here. I think that we need to definitely look at ways that we can decrease needless volume. For example, you're going to have 10,000 to 20,000 cars coming and going from Western Carolina University every single day. That's not going to change, and they're predicting at least 300 students a year growth, pretty much permanently at Western. That's not going to change either. My wife and I haven't bought land yet to settle down. Issues like this project is what's making us look closer to Cashers versus Culloway or Webster. But overall, I think we need to maybe reexamine. But overall, I think we need to maybe reexamine the bypass project. We don't need necessarily a four lane, but it may be a limited access two lane that comes out, maybe at that very expensive $100 million bridge over at Southwestern, might be a good spot. And that's the other thing, you're gonna hear cost estimates coming out here. That bridge was supposed to be, I think, $2 million, and whatever they're quoting for this, multiply it by 20, at least, and drag it out for years. And whether or not they're demolishing businesses to build these roads, I, I grew up around Mooresville in Charlotte, the construction and the gridlock that comes from construction will shut down businesses. So I just think we need to perhaps broaden our perspectives and bring all of Jackson County into this discussion. Thank you.
Did I miss anyone that signed up to speak that didn't get to? Yes, ma'am, did you?
Yeah, I signed up. Well, I, everything's been said, I'm, I'm so glad that I came out for this tonight. There is so many problems with 107, I realize that. But I think speeding is a big one, because I never see anybody get pulled over, and I actually have found myself speeding too, I will admit to it once in a while. Because, you know, it's just, everybody's going fast, too fast in the nation, so that's one thing. I don't want to see any businesses go. I, I go to all those businesses, that's, that's our commercial strip. We have the commercial strip where everything is, where we always go, and then we have the stories downtown, which I love, I go there too, a lot of good restaurants and so on. But that's where we're, that's, that's where the future is. Any of these businesses that go, they're probably not gonna be able to relocate, and you know how difficult and expensive that would be, it'd be ridiculous. And my last comment is, who in the world picked this room? This smallest room of all these people, didn't you realize that there's gonna be a lot of people here tonight? We're sweating, we're hot, we're crowded, we're standing up, that would have been, that's the first thing you did wrong. Thank you.
What is your name? You didn't tell us your name.
And I apologize for missing your name on here, I see it. Thank you. Then that concludes all of the people that signed up to speak. I really want to thank everybody that came, even though this room is crowded, this is where we meet all of our, we have all of our meetings, so, thank you very much for coming. Everyone that spoke, we certainly do appreciate your input. I do want to say, this is a public hearing, so it doesn't include dialogue back and forth with the DOT or with our board, we just wanted the input. But I will say that Brian has said people could reach out to him, we will get that information for you. And people can also call our town manager, Paige Dowling, for information, if you want to speak with someone. And also Rose, who is one of the transportation people at Southwestern.
And also Smart Roads Lines is still...
Yes, yes. And Jay Howard also.
And all of our contact information is on our website also. I, I can speak for myself and several board members, we all work in the community, we're full-time employees too, we have families, we have children, I work on a small business on 107, my parents have a small business in town. We're, we're part of your community, and we want to hear from you, and our, our contact information is available to every one of you.
When you're walking with that Rose out there, from Cogus or, or the road going all the way out to Eagle, you've got standing water here. If you're not in the inside lane, you're, you're taking a chance of... Because it can be, it can be working above your ankle to all your limbs. And that's all the way out. And then it's all the way down, 107, the Cogus now through there, and the, the Thanks Food joints, Taco Bell, and all that, it's standing water on both sides of the highway. But when you're talking about bike lanes, why not get rid of the sidewalks, get the bike lanes in, and make us a walking path? Because we've got broken up sidewalks, we can't walk all the way downtown on the right side of the road, or Cogus, because the sidewalk don't go all the way down, like it does on the other side of the road. But if you're going for the bike lane, it's a walking path, but you gotta get rid of that water first. I mean, the water is an issue.
Thank you very much. Would no further business, can I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? This meeting is adjourned again, thank you so much for coming.